Uh, for J.J., but now that we have Ms. Johnson who's been on board, um, as our city treasurer, um, going in a direction to see, uh, what we would like to take out of the city. Um, we're ending out this budget, uh, knowing that we'll probably have some funds left over to, to do some things with, and then moving forward with a strategic plan, how we'd like to move out of the city. As we just seen, we had, uh, a workshop, well, not a workshop, but a discussion today about our own water treatment facility. So just, just moving forward way before we even had the budget talks, to always stay up to date with our current budget. Um, and even go into, uh, maybe a different direction, an easier direction to read our budget as councilman. Uh, Roland has proposed several times, so I think it's best for us to have a finance committee, um, where our city council, but it really did a workshop, um, finance workshop when we come together as council and, uh, have, uh, J.J. and Ms. Johnson, um, together in the same room to discuss our finances.
Can we, uh, in, in this doc, in this number twenty, it has all of them on there, but can we also like, right now, because we've, mm, I think thirty days have had the treasurer. Um, we know what the description between the treasurer, what is the process, right? And I think that would also help us clarify what the bookkeeper does, what J.J. does, what Ms., what the treasurer does, so we all can, so once we have that clarity, we can, um, help to support in any way we can. But, but again, um, the finance, so again, I, and I don't know if the mayor or, or J.J. talked about it, the finance committee, um, is a, is a good thing, but we've gotta know what, I guess, the parameters of, uh, not, not of the finance committee, but the parameters of the job duties, right? Because if you have five different people doing different things, you don't know who to hold accountable. So if that, once the committee does get started, that may be the first thing you ask, kind of, what does the process look like? What is the flow? So, MPOs and all those things. So, um, to this, to develop, I guess, to discuss, develop a finance committee. Currently, we don't have, uh, an ordinance, um, on a finance committee per se. Um, so, uh, attorney, is, would you suggest us setting up a committee like we're doing? Or in our role, we can already do that. So what, what do you, what do you suggest?
Well, I mean, if you're setting up a permanent committee, I would do it by ordinance. If you're setting up one for this year to have a better handle on the budget in conjunction with.
So we want to do a purpose, so I guess I would do with you to get an ordinance here.
We can do that.
All right, so I move.
Couple other cities have to do it.
I'll move, uh, item twenty to the next, uh, city council.
Second. They'll probably move to second, item twenty, we move to the next meeting for the motion, ready for the questions.
Um, Mr. Japan, top of the row.
Yes, sir.
Can you, um, so if we set this up by ordinance, can we just make sure that, uh, well, you'll bring, you'll bring it back to us. So, yeah, you just, we'll, we'll wait on you to bring back any information before we go. Is there, call for question?
All in favor?
All right.
Uh, doc.
Pass unanimous. Twenty-one, discuss and take action on the proposed city of Purge fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty revenue and dispersals budget preparation schedule. Mr. Johnson.
Okay. Mayor, city council members, I passed out a schedule to you guys, but I'm gonna give you a revision. We left off one little small item. And I'm gonna just take one and pass it down. Now I'll tell you which one to change. The one that I just passed out, he just added one item on, uh, August the twenty-ninth, and that's to file a proposed budget with the municipal clerk. Uh, my secretary left that off the original one. So this, the same as the original one, except we added one item that needs to be done. But what you have here is the proposed budget schedule, preparation schedule, and what's important to me tonight is throughout this schedule, I have, uh, listed, uh, possible workshops for, with the city council in this budget process. So I need to know if what I have listed here is workable with the city council. It's the main thing I need to know tonight.
Call up the dates one at a time.
Okay.
Just focus on this first.
The first date, the first area here is August the thirteenth through the seventeenth. And that right there is to discuss new city operating plans. For instance, you discussed a couple of things tonight that would be a new operating plan that we haven't had any effect. And that's to, uh, bill out your, uh, city ordinances. Uh, another thing is that we have to talk about which direction we gonna take in, uh, utili- utilities. Yes, sir.
Uh, don't, uh, does this be, have to be posted seven to August the past two as well?
Yeah.
So that means we, we only down to Friday.
Right, which is. So, so my issue, my concern, and it's a concern that I've had at the last meeting.
Mm-hmm.
We still have not received. Which you want, the budget. We still haven't seen the numbers.
No, I know, but stay, stay with me. The way I, the first meeting is simply to discuss new operating plans. That's the first meeting. You will get a budget in the next, what we get to, if you look at the schedule here, you will see that we're gonna meet with the department heads, we're gonna meet with the mayor, and then we have, uh, scheduled the next possible budget meetings here is on August twenty-first through the twenty-sixth. But I need one, or you all can, I don't even need a formal meeting, but I need to know if you have some, uh, particular new operating plans for the city that, that I don't know about.
Right.
See, y'all can just email me that.
You mean operating plans that affects the budget?
Yeah, right. See, I, I'll give you an example. What you're talking about tonight is for us, city ordinances. That, that's something new. You have to pay for that. And I don't know anything about that. So if, if you have some other situations like that, that's what I need to know about. That'll help me out in putting this together.
So, so.
If y'all got a wish list or something.
Mr. Johnson.
Go ahead.
In this schedule, you have us making some decisions within a week?
No, 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 no. You're not gonna make the, the, you got two months to do a budget. The budget decision is not until the last day. You got workshops leading up to that. We don't approve the budget until September the twenty, uh, third.
We have to put out, so that, that's the formality piece. But there's some things that need to be put out. If we specifically had all the information in front of us, we have to post some stuff in the paper before the twenty-third.
Well, yeah, we're gonna.
Write it wrong.
That has nothing to do with a decision you have to make, except the property tax.
That's correct. That's a, that's a decision though.
And that is on, if you're looking for schedule.
Mr. Johnson, this is what I, this is what I don't want you to do.
What's that?
Your, your role and responsibilities to provide us with the numbers. Our role and responsibility is to take the information, uh, and, and, and communicate that to the citizens in reference to what they've talked about, they wanted to move forward. And so I don't want you to put us in a corner saying you only have this amount of time to look at something. We want the numbers and allow, we want the numbers and give us the time to go through, and then you can help walk us through it. But right now, it feels as if we, we're on a ti- a short timeframe and, and, and you're driving the conversation, and we don't currently have the numbers in front of us.
My point to you is that you will have the numbers. You will have the numbers. This first meeting, I'm only asking you, for this first meeting, that's this, this, this week here, is to give me something, if you have some things that you want me to look at in this budget, that we don't normally have it, that we haven't done in the past.
Mr. J.J., the reason why I said that, we just had an in-depth con- like, you, like, you've been here the whole year, right?
Correct.
We've had an in-depth conversation about an engineering firm, we've had an in-depth conversation about USW, and you just saying, hey, give me some numbers so I can throw it in.
Right, I can't do anything about the engineering firm or USW right now, because y'all haven't made any decisions yet.
We, we are.
So we're still waiting.
No, we're, we're not.
So I can't give you any numbers on USW and the engineering firm.
You can, 'cause you have the.
I can't give you any numbers on, on those.
Mr. Johnson, hold up. Send us what you gave us at the end of last year.
Right.
So the council has the numbers, you've been giving them to us monthly, you've been giving them to us quarterly, and you gave it to us at the end of last year.
Right.
Send council what you have, and if they have some additional input, which is what you're saying operationally that affects the budget, they can update it on there.
That's, that's what I have.
Send it.
Okay.
Send what you, send what we used effective October one of this fiscal year.
Mm-hmm.
And then council can take a look and see, oh, we need to add this thing or, but those are our numbers. Send them the numbers.
Right.
I don't want you to go through adding, because that's the job up here. Send them the numbers, and let's see what other input they have, which is what you're asking for now. That's simple on both sides.
And that's, that's what I gave you tonight.
I don't think you gave us the October one fiscal year.
Yeah, well.
The new budget that we adopted.
What you did, what I gave you is the annualization. See, what you do, you annualize.
I know. I don't see that, but send us.
Oh, okay, I, I see. And I'm gonna give you guys that.
Okay, no, give it to us.
Right, okay, but what I need to know.
Between tomorrow and the next day.
All right, but what I need to know now is these potential.
We don't have.
Workshops.
Yeah. Okay, let's say you have anyways.
I need to know.
One for each week.
Yeah, can we, can we fit in potential workshops? See, that's, that's what I'm after.
Okay, can we get, gentlemen, between the thirteenth and the seventeenth, is that the?
Well, the only way to do it is the fifteenth.
But the only way to do it on Friday, 'cause you gotta put a seven to hour notice.
Well, but, but no, you, you got some other dates here. Uh, thi- this week here, on that, you all can, can email me something on that. What I wanted, what I was trying to get here is that if you have some new operating plans that, that you want us to look at, then email me that. You can email me that.
Send us what you have, and then let's see what comes back. What's the date that we're not working with both sides?
So not this week, but what's the, the date that y'all have for the next week?
Oh, the twenty-first through the twenty-sixth. So I need.
I only, I have only up to twenty-first. Can, uh, we do the twenty-first? But again, I could miss the other ones, but I, I won't hear the twenty-first. Uh, I don't think that, this is, I, I mean, I know that this is the time to do this, but we don't have.
But no, but what I need you guys, is to, can you give me a work, I'm gonna have the information for you.
I get what you asking, but what I'm saying is that right now, I don't think the dates is gonna line up with three people up here right now.
Well, I have to have workshops.
But, but we can't say dates, 'cause we missing two of the people. So if we say twenty-first, and then.
Do we have enough to have three for the twenty-first?
We don't have three right now.
Let's, uh.
So we don't.
Let's, 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 let's schedule one for the twenty-first to show our efforts, and then we'll check with the other two people.
Yeah, if that's.
Okay, Miss Vine, let's check with those who aren't here, see if we can make it. What time on the twenty-first? Six P.M.?
We probably need five, or six, I guess. Yeah, six?
Definitely five.
So six or five.
Six P.M. on the twenty-first. What's the next date?
All right, the next date is, uh, okay, between the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth or the thirtieth.
You have twenty-sixth on here, but we need to have something on the agenda for.
No, no, that, that's the city council meeting, that's to vote on the property tax rate. And you're gonna have your data on that this week.
Is there anything that we can do on the twenty-sixth?
Yeah, the, the.
At five?
Right, we, we can have a meeting before the, uh.
Before the council meeting.
Council meeting, right.
Okay, let's, let's schedule it. If we don't have what we need, then, now, uh, council, once it's posted for a budget workshop, is a quorum required?
Yes. A workshop is a city council meeting, I don't care what you call it.
Okay, so we'll check on that, the twenty-first, and we're talking about five o'clock on the twenty-sixth, what's next?
Uh, and then, uh, between the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, or the thirtieth.
Between the who?
That last one, about one.
That's not the last one, that's just the next, next opportunity.
So August twenty-seventh through twenty-eighth, you need a workshop.
So, so again, so just real close, uh, bear with me. So we're gonna do five o'clock on the twenty-sixth to pet, um, another one, and then we saying we have to have another one that week?
Yeah, well, I'm just trying to, to, to give you opportunities as many as we can.
Okay, so.
The next time is between August twenty-seventh, the twenty-eighth, or the thirtieth.
Can we do the, anyone do the twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth?
I might be able to do the twenty-eighth.
Yeah, I can make the twenty-eighth one.
All right.
What time?
We're doing six again?
Six.
Okay.
So, yeah, we may, uh, uh, that school's back out, school's back in too, so.
Twenty-eight.
All right, and the next one, and, and this, this next page, it says, if needed, the fourth through the sixth, the tenth through the thirteenth, or the seventeen through the twenty. And this right here is basically the, uh, workshop that you, we would basically come up. We have to give a proposed budget, which is only a proposed budget, by the twenty-ninth. So that, that next meeting would, would, gotta give us, have to give a proposed budget. That's not the final budget. That's just something to, to give to the city secretary, okay? We continue to work on it.
That one's gotta be published.
No, no, it has, only goes to the city secretary. That's the only place it goes to. It's not published, it's not published anywhere.
September fifth, it says, send notice to the paper listing the date of two thousand nineteen, two thousand.
That's the hearing.
Budget.
That's the hearing, that's the hearing. That's not the budget itself.
Okay.
Right. All right, and the next opportunity to meet again, to continue working on this budget, we've got a proposed budget. Then we got opportunities now between September the fourth and the sixth, the tenth and the thirteenth. We can do one every week if you want. So I'm asking you guys to, and it's been, it's, it's been my observation in the past that we need to have as many as we can have.
That's correct.
So if we can meet between the fourth and the sixth, and then meet again between the tenth and the thirteenth, I'm available in between the seventeenth and the twentieth.
Can, can anybody do the first week in September? Remember, that's Labor Day. So, um, that, I mean, that's the week of Labor Day.
Yeah, Monday's Labor Day.
Can we do the, the fourth or no? Which is a Wednesday. The goal is to try to alternate it to where someone, we may be able to pick up somebody.
We can't make it.
You can't make it on the other.
Right.
But, um, does the fourth or fifth look for, work for anybody? This is when we make sausage.
That Thursday, the fifth?
Yeah.
Is that like a long weekend, the fifth? September fifth? Okay.
Yeah, he said the September fourth.
But, what, yeah, I say the fourth, well, don't we have to do something on the fifth, though, on, on your sheet, do you see? It says, send notice to the paper, that's only listing the dates, or do we send a budget?
The main thing I'm trying to get here is workshops.
No, I, I'm trying to get your workshop on your paper.
Mm-hmm.
On September fourth, the one that you, that you gave to us.
Right.
It says, send notice to the paper, listing the dates of the proposed budget, citizens' public hearing. At this time, do we have to have a finalize, or they just need the dates?
They just need the dates, that's all.
So we can do the fourth or the fifth?
Mm-hmm.
Can y'all make, can y'all?
I, I, I feel I'm gonna come do it before.
All right.
What's our, what's our date for publishing in the paper? Do you, you recall that, Miss Vine?
To publish what now? You, you just publish dates in the paper.
I know, but we have to have a cutoff date for when it has to get to the paper.
Oh, here it is, right, that's what I have listed here. If you look here, send notice to the paper, uh, for, uh, the date for the proposed budget on the, for the fifth. They're gonna be published on the twenty-third. I checked with the paper. We gotta get them in there by Thurs- Thursday to be published in the following Wednesday.
So it'll be published on the eleventh for the hearing for the twenty-third.
That's right, that's right. And that's given us ten days before the, uh, the bub, the, ten days before the twenty-third, and that, that's when you approve it.
How so, how soon can you get this ready?
Pardon?
How soon can you have that ready?
Have what ready?
What you're talking about for September fifth?
It, it'll be ready on September, it, it'll be ready.
I don't want it on September fifth. If September fifth is the day it's gotta get to the paper, we want at least a day or two before. Don't make deadlines like that. If you want it on the eleven.
You're getting your birthdate on the twenty-ninth of August.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna give that, yeah. I, I'll give that, uh, to the paper and pick up, the dates are already set here. See, so that's no problem. I, I'll have that to the paper, as long as I get it there before Thursday. So it can be, I have it there Wednesday.
Okay.
See?
I'm just saying.
Yeah, I, I got you, I got you. I, I'll have it there Wednesday.
If it throws up.
Right, 'cause it's just giving them a date.
Tomorrow, there's no due over here.
Right.
Okay.
The thing that we do have to publish, and that is the proposed property tax rate, and again, that'll be proposed.
When is that?
Uh, we give that rate back on the, uh, next page. That has to be.
August twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth, right.
But, but that's what, so, so.
That, that, that's at a council meeting. Y'all, y'all will vote on a proposed rate at that council meeting.
Right, but my, my concern.
What's that?
In the proposed rate, are you, have you taken consideration into all the cha-
Those changes don't take effect until next year. They don't, they don't affect this year.
The re- revenue?
Yeah, don't affect this year. They, it's next year, right.
We're still under the old system this year.
The main change in that is the rollback rate change. Rollback rate went from ten percent of, I mean, eight percent, a hundred and eight to three. That's the main change.
Right.
And then there's some other changes in the way you calculate the, uh, effective rollback rate, because they came up with a new rate.
Correct.
It's a little, little new name to it.
And so we're saying that you, so the reason why I ask is, we used to, if citizens understand, we haven't went up on property tax in some long time, never, I won't say never, in a long time. And, and I'm saying with the effective rate or the rollback rate, have we taken into consideration? Could we used to just be able to say, okay, we can publish this, these dates, 'cause we don't, we're not gonna go up? Have you already did the calculations?
We're working on that now, but I do know that our rollback rate is less than our current rate. That's the problem.
Right, which means that, I'm glad you said that, which means you can't just come to us with this proposed rate, think we're gonna slam dunk this, and we just gonna.
No, you can't.
Give the numbers together. Right, and so what I'm saying is while we have to be a little more deliberate.
Yeah.
Because we're gonna have to take into consideration.
You're right. I'm gonna give those numbers. And I have those this week. And I, I'll get those numbers to you. But I do know the rollback rate is less than our, our current rate. And what that means is.
Oh, I know what you mean.
What does it mean?
No, finish, finish, 'cause I want the audience to hear, I want them to, go ahead and finish.
Yeah, what that means is that normally your city will adopt a rollback rate. And, and that's collecting the same taxes, but base, but it's based on the new evaluation. Uh, you don't get the extra money, so to speak. You lose money, go back to the rollback rate. Uh, you do have, you can be subject to a citizens to require you to have.
Election.
But if the citi- citizens don't require you to do that, you don't have to. Basically, that's where.
If they don't require us to do what?
W- w- once we have a public hearings, you have to let them know how much the new taxes are gonna be if you use the current rate, how much it, it creates. If the citizens at those public hearings require you to, they can petition you to have a, uh, an election to go to, say, to let higher rate. But if they don't, currently, you can go to that, but going forward, then you won't be able to. You have to go back to the rollback rate. And the rollback rate is gonna be less than what it is now.
And at what point do we make the citizens aware of this?
During, during, during the two tax, you gotta have two tax hearings. At the tax hearing, we will let them know, if, if your decision is to go with the current rate, which is higher than the rollback rate, you let them know to that effect, and how much, that extra revenue that's gonna generate over the rollback rate.
And how much it's gonna cost them, not just revenue.
Yeah, yeah, right, we, we give them all that information.
Okay.
If the citizens do at that time, they have to get a petition to, that, to give, they want a petition to have a, a vote to, for the citizens to agree to go to the higher rate, which is the current rate, so to speak. If they don't, then this year, the way I understand it, you can keep your current rate, even though it's higher than the rollback rate.
We have a, and we have a one-time election, which is the other piece to this. I have, I asked Ms. Johnson to get us a copy. In the presentation that I was gonna do today, talks about, um, revenue caps, and she made a copy of the presentation that the attorneys did for us at the meeting. But it, it gives point by point for us to be able to get some more explanation to talk about this. But what, one of the important things that, that I think, Mr. Johnson, once we kinda go into this, is, is that we gotta be very strategic on how we move, because after this year, um, we will be locked in at that three point five, and you have one shot and one opportunity if you're gonna go above that. And so we gotta be able to communicate and explain whatever decision we make to the citizens, 'cause it's gonna impact them. But we also gotta make sure that we don't cap ourselves long-term, just trying to do, punt the ball. So, again, this is gonna be very important, and since she's bringing it back, I have documents for everybody.
Counsel, this is all based on new laws? Are you all familiar with these law?
Yes, and, and, and I think what councilmember Roland is saying is, even though that law doesn't come into effect until January one, it won't affect you till next fiscal year, not this coming fiscal year, is that once you get to that point, it's gonna be based upon this year's number. So if you need to push the envelope now, you may need to push the envelope now, so that next year, if it does affect you, then you're starting higher than the point. But, you know, it all depends and.
Well, wait a minute, even if you set a higher rate, right, Brian, when you, the calculation, though, is based on debt service. And debt service is a, is a hard number. And then the rollback rate is a percentage of recovering, uh, your, your, your prior actual, your actual taxes, see? So it, 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 it's a little tricky. It's a little tricky on that.
And I, and I want that trickiness in front of the public, and we need to invite it.
And, and some people, we still don't, some of, we, some of the i- instances of, we still don't understand. It, it, it's written vague, 'cause I've talked to a, a, a number of assessors.
You have a tax attorney in your office?
Well, we have attorneys who can brief you on this.
Well, I, I've been told to check with T.M.L.
T.M.L. did a workshop. What I'm saying is the documents that I'm giving.
Yeah, he's been to a workshop on this.
I've been to a workshop on this, and it, it outlines the quickened summary for everybody, and citizens can have a copy. This is what I was gonna do in the presentation. What the, the interesting thing that you're saying, Mr. J.J., it does have to do with debt service. But if we're not careful, we have to project, because, again, the basic streets improvements or things that we wanna do, we're not gonna afford to have that space to increase it if we do not. Okay. Now, but the citizens gotta go for it.
The citizens gotta.
But, but again, part, part of it is making sure that we clearly communicate,
Communicate, yeah.
And we have the information to where citizens can have a copy, and they start to become experts at it as well.
Anything else from Mr. Johnson on this?
It's not, using that.
That's it, that's it.
Um, so do we, do we got all the dates?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, twenty-third, twenty-sixth, twenty-eighth, fourth.
Well, wait, 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 no, we, we didn't get a date in September?
No, it's in the fourth.
It said the fourth.
The fourth?
Yeah.
What about the next week, the tenth through the thirteenth? I think we need a date there too. Or, or the seventeenth through the tw- we need another.
Um. The tenth or the seventeenth work for anybody? Or do you wanna go?
Uh, seventeenth one.
Uh, I can, I can only make the tenth.
Well, you got the seventeenth, eighteenth, nineteenth.
How's it gonna go?
Ten.
Well, we got some time, we got, we got some time in between there. No, you, you know what, there, we got some time in between the September here, so if we see that we're gonna need some more, we can go ahead on and pencil one in at the next day.
Well, no, let's pencil one in now and send it to the council.
All right, we down to four, uh, what about between the tenth, thirteenth?
So we're gonna go September ten.
Let's put the ten.
Okay. And between the seventeen.
Depending on your debt service, yeah.
Yeah, seventeen.
I know.
Yeah, fifteen million, I mean.
Seventeen.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then you can send us out a date of schedule.
Okay, dude, that's it. That's it. We'll put the numbers in.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, item twenty-two, discuss, consider, and take action on citizen comment policy under H.P. two eight four zero. City Attorney Griffin.
Okay, I think most of you may be aware that one of the things that they passed in the legislature had to do with citizen comments at city council meetings. And I want a little bit of guidance, because this comes into effect on September first. So at our next meeting, we wanna have a new policy in place. And what I want to do then is put it into ordinances where you have the citizens to be heard, heard section, so I'll be bringing that. But it's a pretty simple question that I wanna ask you. You have to allow any citizen who wants to discuss an agenda item to do so prior to that agenda item coming on the meeting. Well, your city council has it at the beginning of the meeting anyway, but you don't have it separated into agenda, non-agenda items. So typically, and I think what we would recommend, is that you have the same thing that you have now for non-agenda items, or similar to now, and then as the items come along, have the citizens speak at the time of the agenda item. And you could have them all speak at the beginning of the meeting. The reason we don't really recommend that is because then you have some people you can interact with, some people you can't, and you don't really wanna interact with them. It's still citizen comments, not a public hearing for each of the agenda items. So we're kinda looking for guidance on when you want it in relation to the agenda item.
So, on the agenda item, can that be the same three minute, or do they have restriction on that?
Mm-hmm, yeah. No, 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 you, you can still have a restriction on that. It's just that you have to, some cities were having citizens speak at the end of the meeting. And this is just a very specific, they have to speak before the agenda item.
Can we, there's some cities that do citizens' comments at the beginning for anything, and then some cit- citizens, I notate, this is for agenda item four, that has to do with this, and this is my area. Um, you're saying you want recommendations whether to do it at the beginning or on each of the item, the, if, that will take us.
Yeah, so, so what I think you would do is have a sign-up sheet where Jane Doe, and then you have agenda item, non-agenda item, X agenda item, which agenda item number four. Okay, then the question would be, do they speak at the beginning of the meeting still? Or when agenda item four comes up, the mayor says, uh, Jane Doe, you wanted to speak to this item, and then prior to the city council hearing the item, but right prior to that item, that's when they're heard. So that's kinda my question.
An ordinance.
Yeah, you have, in your ordinance.
That's a, that's a new law, isn't it?
It is the new state statute.
Correct, correct.
I'm, I'm going to put it in your ordinance, 'cause I wanna fix your old ordinance, so it doesn't say something different. But as I'm doing it, how do you want it to play out?
At the beginning?
All at the beginning.
All at the beginning. And so that means also, um, we will ha- we'll have to notate if this is for an agenda item, and then we can reference back to it. But if we had, we have ten people speaking on each of the items, which if you think our meetings are long, but we won't, we all, I think it's also good for transparency, people to, to say what it is. So if we can make it the ordinance to where it's at the beginning, um, that would be good.
We can do that.
Now, I thought, I thought the statute said that residents now have the right to speak on an issue at the time that issue came up, and not just.
Prior to the time it comes up.
Okay.
Me, and the, the purpose for that is not after. Some cities literally make all the citizens sit here and wait, and you vote, and then they talk about it.
Right.
So that you don't get input prior to the vote. That's the theory behind it. So you have basically any time prior to your.
But in the information, I mean, the intent was to have them address, be able to address an issue, not two hours before the issue comes up, and everybody's forgot what they said.
No, no, no.
And they have to leave or whatever.
Yeah, that's not what the statute says.
Okay.
It, it's before. So I'm asking you, what do you want before to me?
Before, so. Basically what we have now, is that what you mean by before? Yes, but we wanna identify, we want the, the citizens to know that they get their citizens, so do, so they get their time for citizens' comments, general, anything. Then they get their three minutes for any specific agenda item. So they say, I wanna speak on agenda item number four. Those are two different sections, and we have to announce that. Is that what you're saying?
Well, yeah, so, so I'm Jane Doe, and I wanna speak to agenda item four, five, and six. I get to address each of those.
For three minutes?
Well, I mean, you can set.
Or maximum.
You can still set your own rules regarding that. I'm presuming you want three minutes still. Actually, you have two in your.